I'm the chair.
We'll go ahead and call the county board meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, and we'll take the roll.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Thank you for that, and in Commissioner Civerage's absence, we'll be conducting the board meeting here, so the first item is tax claims and abatements.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, first, there's a motion, and second, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye. Second item is review of checks issued from finance and central services and from human services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Schulte, second by Commissioner Cordiak. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, that motion passes. The next item is approval of minutes from the May 24, 2016 county board meeting. Our motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte.
Begging.
Second by Commissioner Cordiak. Any additions or subtractions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes.
You had one opposed.
One opposite.
Cause five, that's six ayes.
I don't even see, oh, there he is.
The next item is chair's remarks, and we have one item under chair's remarks today, and this is a recognition of some of the men and women who spent much of their careers in service to the people of Anoka County. And on behalf of the residents of Anoka County, it is our privilege to thank you today. Some of our recipients are not able to join us today, but we will call their name to recognize their service. I'd like to call on Associate County Administrator Dee Guthman to lead our recognition program. Dee?
Thank you, Commissioner. As I call your name, please come up to accept your award. Commissioner Gamache, you are up first. For 30 years, we'll start out with, and we have Steve Biermeister of the Sheriff's Office. The next one is Don Fields of the Sheriff's Office. And for 30 years, we have Dave Paschal of the Sheriff's Office.
The sheriff came going.
We have Diana Stelmach from Property Records and Taxation.
No, Diane's not gonna be here, and she is not here today, and that is it for your side.
The next commissioner we have up will be Commissioner Schulte. And we have Paula Anderson of the License Center. And we have Jeanette Kleckner from the library. And we have Suzanne Raymond, 30 years for Property Records and Taxation. And Jeff Reiminger from Property Records and Taxation. The next commissioner we have is Commissioner Cordiak. And we're still on 30 years of service, and we have Lori Dordell from Community Health.
Lori, thank you very much.
And I have 30 years of Evelyn Nelson from Social Services.
I know so many, I don't do that lately. See you again. Started about the same time a lot.
We are done. We also have Sherry Oaks from Library, she is not present today. We have Lisa Schmidt from Economic Assistance, she is also not present today. The next commissioner we have up is Commissioner West. The first one we have is Cindy Laffin, and she is from Corrections.
Hang on one second. I've got it. Here it is. I apologize.
Congratulations.
The next for 30 years is Dan Galbraith from Corrections. For 30 years of service, we have Dave Gurgent from Corrections, and he is not present today. We then have 30 years of Renee Gosin from Corrections. And the last from Corrections is 30 years with Kelly Nibel from Corrections. All right, the next one we have is Commissioner Look. And for 30 years of service, we have Kim Jensen from Central Communications. We have Dan Clint from the County Attorney's Office, 30 years. We have Becky Lenkey from the County's Attorney's Office. We have Brian Lindberg from the County's Attorney's Office, he is not present today. And we have Barb Mcusick from the Community Development, and she is also 30 years but not present today. And the last one in this group is Mike Roth, 30 years Employee Relations. The next group we have, we move into a different entry of 35 years at the county. We have Joe Bungert from Parks. Okay, the next one we have is Jerry Dahlberg from Corrections, also not present. And then we have Cindy Foster, Property Records and Taxation, 35 years at the county. And we have Roger Stark, 35 years from the Highway Department. And last but not least, Jerry Soma, 50 years at Anoka County County Administration.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say that our employees at Anoka County are our most important asset, and we're extremely fortunate to have so many long-time loyal people working on behalf of the citizens of Anoka County. Want to thank you in allowing us to celebrate you today. Thank you for your hard work. And other commissioners, if you have comments, Commissioner Schulte?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, again, just reiterate the value that we place on our employees and your service to the citizens of Anoka County. But lastly, I just want to comment that when Jerry Soma was hired, I was taking a nap on my mat in kindergarten. I'm not sure if that makes him old or me young, but either way, okay.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Schulte, I wasn't born yet. That makes me young. Other commissioners? Commissioner Gamache?
I just want to say, it's been, I've been on the board now for two years, and I've got to know some of you, not all of you, but I want to thank you for the job that you do every day for the citizens of Anoka County. We have a great group of people here from everybody that I've met over the last couple of years, and I just really appreciate the hard work that you put in every day for our residents, our citizens, and congratulations on the number of years that you've been with the county. It shows some dedication, and it also just gives us, it just shows us the work that you do is really appreciated by the people, and thank you all very much.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
West.
I just want to ditto what these two have said. The character of the people that work in Anoka County is exemplary. It was actually, I didn't know what to expect when I became a county commissioner, but it was just a pleasant surprise to see people that really, they worked for government, and they were as dedicated as any other person might be for the company they worked for, and I just thank you so much for that. And I'd just like to comment about the old guy. It's just been a real pleasure, Jerry, to have you leading us. I think you are good and fair to our employees, and I really appreciate how you guide us as commissioners and keep us up to date on things we need to know about, and just thanks for being willing to spend this much of your time with us.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Thank you, Commissioner, and I'm just, I'm humbled by this event, quite frankly. I've kind of been here before, but the tenure, the career that you have invested with Anoka County is immense. I've been here for, well, a lot of years, and so many of you have come to me, and I've come to you, and we've all needed things, work on behalf of the Anoka County public, but obviously found a home here, you make things work, you take care of the needs and interests of your neighbors and friends around us, and I just really appreciate all that you do, and thank all of you on behalf of your years of service, it's much appreciated. Thank you.
Chair, if I can, and I've been here, just a little short of what Mr. Stone was generous, not by much, but I have worked with pretty much everybody who has received an award here today, and I can tell this board how professional those employees have been throughout the course of the years, and how dedicated they have been, and I have personally witnessed it as part of the Attorney's Office, and I do want to thank them for their dedication and their professionalism, because they really have gone above and beyond many, many times to accomplish the task of Anoka County in a very selfless way, so thank you for all the hard work that you have done, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners and Attorney Plumbo. I too want to just say thank you. We can't thank our employees enough. You're on the front line, so to speak, on many difficult issues at times, and putting in long hours and sacrificing time with your families while working for the people of Anoka County. Want to certainly thank those that are being honored today, and all of our employees because of the hard work that they do, and we can't show enough appreciation for all the work that's done here. Well, thank you so much. And Jerry, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you, and hopefully many more years here. I don't know if you've set the, tried to set the bar at 50, I think you might have, and certainly this is a gold standard, and just amazing, you know, when we travel for the different conferences, whether it's the National Association of Counties or the Minnesota Counties, everyone knows Jerry. Everyone comes over and hugs Jerry and says hi to Jerry and talks to Jerry and recounts memories of the past, and that's truly, I think, in terms of people and how they view Anoka County, they think of Jerry in many cases at these conferences, and so it's definitely a badge of honor, I think, Jerry, for the work that you've done for Anoka County, and we're definitely appreciative of that, and thank everyone as well for all the hard work that they've done, so.
Can you give them all a hand?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, other members of the employees that are here, those that are honored, I can't think of a day that I didn't enjoy getting up and coming to work. Now, there's some things you have to do that you don't like, but for the most part, I really have enjoyed coming to work, the challenges and problems that we've, that I've encountered over the years. Had a lot of different roles in the county. I think the thing that has made life good for me is the staff that we work with, whether it be when I was in probation office or in Corrections or today, and the leadership, whether it's the county board or other leadership members, that has made my life much better. And I realize that if you're not happy at work, you're probably not going to be happy at home, so I really have enjoyed what I've done. As I've told some people, I'm probably a little stupid that I haven't retired yet, but I still like what I'm doing, and thank each one of you, both on the employee side and on the county board side. It's been a real joy, and I haven't set a date yet, but one of these days I will, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thinking of making this a career, Jerry?
Well, thanks again, and this concludes our chair's remarks, although it's been a great time of celebration. Now, we're going to move on to the committee reports, beginning with the Transportation Committee, and I am going to, thank you, I'm going to cover the Transportation Committee information. Usually it's Commissioner Schulte, but in his absence, we managed to hold that committee down, so we'll go ahead and get at it here as Doug makes his way up. Okay, item number one is the committee recommends approval of joint powers agreement, see triple zero four eight three five with the city of Oak Grove for projects 002-622-035, the intersection improvement at the intersection of County State Highway 22 or Viking Boulevard and County Road 9, Lake George Boulevard and the city of Oak Grove. Will make a motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Questions, discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye. Item number two is the committee recommends approval of license agreement, see triple zero five zero five five with the city of Minneapolis for temporary access point and card reader stand within the county right-of-way and Cassau 1 or East River Road from August 2016 through August 2020.
Can I move it, Mr. Chair?
Yes, moved by Commissioner Cordiak.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brett. Cordiak.
Aye.
That motion passes. Item number three, the committee recommends approval of a break in the dedicated right-of-way of access on County Road 54, West Freeway Drive to allow for driveway access to the city of Columbus Water Tank.
I'll move it.
Moved by Commissioner West. Her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Just under informational items, the intersection improvement on County Road 22 and County Road 9 is going out for bids. This is a much-needed project, those that have traveled this area during morning or evening rush hour know the backups that occur here, I know that the mayor is very excited about this, as well as the council and the staff over there and the residents, so this is a much-needed improvement, and we're excited to see this getting underway. That concludes the Transportation Committee report. The next item is the Information Technology Report. Commissioner Gamache?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Information Technology Committee recommends the county board approve a memo of understanding, number C0005044, between the county and the Joint Law Enforcement Council related to the use of county fiber for system redundancy purposes. This is the fiber, and Susan's up here, so she can correct me if I get it wrong, but this is the fiber, light fiber, that provides connectivity between the two locations via something called the coarse wave domain multiplex. This technology operates on wavelengths, colors, and IT, and IT will allow the PSDs use of two colors of the eight being installed for primary connectivity and redundancy The Joint Law Enforcement Council will be paying for what they're going to be using, so if I'm remembering correctly, there's really nothing on the county budget regarding IT, and if Susan wants to add in, let me know.
I can, Mr. Chair, members of the board, good morning, my name is Susan Freeland, I'm the Director of Information Technology. The county has some private-owned fiber, so this is not Zayo fiber, that we acquired back in 2009, and that fiber goes between the government center and the Sheriff's Office. We use that fiber for a number of purposes, some of it is related to disaster recovery. We also use it for some voice and data services between our office and the Sheriff's Office. We've got quite a bit of bandwidth there, and we have the ability through some of the technology that Commissioner Gamache referenced to share a little bit of that fiber usage with the Joint Law Enforcement Council, so that they can have some disaster recovery on bandwidth of their own related to the public safety data system. In sharing this opportunity with Jerry Soma, I equivalated this to being if our fiber was a power plant, this is kind of like giving them an extension cord, so it's a very small amount of technology as far as any bandwidth loss to us, but a significant amount for them. There's a small amount of splicing work that will need to be done by a vendor, it's about a couple thousand dollars' worth. The council would be paying for that investment. Outside of that, there's no real cost to the county, and the council will have a small maintenance amount to a vendor annually, and that's about a couple hundred dollars. They're certainly willing to incur that cost in order to have this functionality.
Mr. Chair, can I move this?
Yes. Moved by Commissioner Schulte, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
And that motion passes.
And for informational items, we did look at the technology CIP request, which Susan gave us a great amount of detail on that, and all of the different things that are in the pipeline for the next five years, so there is a lot of things that need to get done, and as we all know, IT is not cheap, so it's rather expensive on our CIP plan, but they're all things that are needed, and that will be coming forward as the years go on, depending on what year of the CIP it is, but did you want to add anything on that one, Susan?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it is a rather, a large investment, a broad investment. We do rather extensive research, especially for the first two years of that five-year plan, it gets a little more difficult as we go out further, but we do a lot of investigation down to specific quotes, so they are very specific dollar amounts. We certainly extend that technology as far as we can, we try not to be on the bleeding edge, and we certainly extend the life as far as we can. We try to get proactive in buying things at times where we can maybe pair up investments or purchases to get a better discount, so we're very proactive with that. All kidding aside, we use any kind of a coupon we can, so we're very careful in protecting those investments, and again, stretching them out as far as we can. We'll certainly be getting, as we get closer to the timing of those purchases, working with purchasing, working with outside entities and even other counties to seeing if there's ways that we can maximize investments when the time is right.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I like to commend Susan and her team for the work that they do with all the different departments, because everybody needs IT, and they're all working closely together to find the best deals and to get the best systems put in place that will serve our customers, which are our residents, and in what has become the world that we're in now, where everybody expects things to be at their fingertips, on their phones or wherever, sometimes government is a little bit behind some of that, but you know, with Susan's group, they're really working to try to make those things simpler for everybody that works with Anoka County, so I commend them for the hard work, because it's difficult, and like I said, these things are not cheap, and everybody realizes that when you're in business or in government, how expensive IT can be for updates and different things like that, so our team's on top of it, though, they're doing a great job. And that's my report.
Excellent. Susan, quick question, Commissioner Cordiak said duct tape, you don't use.
You offer one.
Only if it's a color, Mr. Chair, that matches the computer, and nobody can tell.
I just had one follow-up question on the CIP. This is the CIP based on the annual allocation fund that we put money into every year to help fund these projects, or is this additional CIP?
Mr. Chair, that is correct, so what we do is we take those projects, we put them up against that fund to make sure that we're going within what we have and within our means. We also take a look at the projects that were funded for this year, and anywhere where there's monies left over, we apply that to the next year's funds so that we're staying within our means.
Right, I am very thankful that that fund is there and that we can kind of project out the years of what's going to be needed and be able to finance those things, and so it's doing the purpose it was designed for, so.
It has definitely helped with our cause.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, moving on from Information Technology Report, we'll go right into Parks and Community Services Report. Commissioner Cordiak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the committee met the other day, there's a few items that require our attention, let me think, one of them is administrative agreement that we like to engage in with the Metropolitan Council. This has to do with some leftover legacy fund from 2013 and other places, we wanted to redirect those dollars into a variety of different places, so one of them is the Centerville Beaches, I recall, but we need an addendum to specifically do that, this simply allows us to expend those dollars on that beach project, I'll offer it.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache, there are discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Let's do a roll call on that, I will, go ahead.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Okay, and that passes. Item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, secondarily, we're here to accept the gifts, in this case, it's a kids fishing clinic, which, as I recall, was hugely successful, and these are some residual dollars that came to us from various entities to support that cause, and I would be happy to, I'll move it.
Okay, the resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cordiak, discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm just going to call out real quick the four entities here that donated money, it was the Coon Rapids Lions Club, Coon Rapids VFW, Coon Rapids American Legion Post 334, and the Coon Rapids Kiwanis.
Coon Rapids is stepping up.
Yeah, well, it's in their back.
No, it was a Coon Rapids Fishing, well, it was an Anoka County fishing clinic, but it was in Coon Rapids at the Regional Dam Park.
Thank you for identifying those. So the resolution's been offered, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that resolution's adopted. Item number three. And that resolution's adopted. Item number three.
Item number three, Mr. Chairman, Officer Paschal from our sheriff's office had, has donated a pet waste station. This is a standing upright station where you pull and collect bags from, and he donated it to the facility that we have, the dog park facility, and we'd like to accept that gift of his and appreciate his support for that cause. He worked with dogs himself through our sheriff's office, and as I recall, that animal, was injured in service?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll offer it.
The resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cordia, is there a discussion? Just want to thank him for this, and we all see these around from time to time, and they're well-used, and that's a wonderful thing, so. Roll call, vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That resolution's adopted. Item number four.
Thanks, Chairman. In this case, Tom and Linda, I'm sorry, Tom Dupree and Linda Grubbs have offered a memorial bench overlooking Centerville Lake. I forget the loss likely that they suffered, but we're happy to recognize them. We do have a specific program and cost for installing benches, and obviously Centerville Lake probably deserved it and will enjoy it, so we're happy to accept their gift and happy to add it to overlook Centerville Lake. I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cordia, is there a discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Item number five.
Item number five, Mr. Chairman, I might ask John to comment about this, it's had a great deal of discussion, this is a discussion regarding the expansion of the license center in Blaine location, I think has had many eyes upon it by now, but maybe John can just kind of bring us up to date. We've been through finance, and been through building management, and been through a wide variety of discussions with both the owners and entities involved, and we're here to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the county board. For the record, I'm John Von Delaney, Division Manager for Parks and Community Services. The proposal before you this morning, the amendment to the agreement on the Blaine License Center, is to essentially move the passport center from a very sort of cramped and confined space within the license center at Blaine to a separate facility directly adjacent to the existing license passport center. There's some space that's become available, it's about 1,350 square feet. We feel that we can serve our customers better, we can, we'll have four windows operating, four clerks instead of two, we'll be able to move people through line faster, more efficiently, and deal with the backlog of customers that we find ourselves dealing with on a frequent basis. The new space that we would be amending into this lease is about 1,350 square feet. You can see on the diagram how that office would be set up. The owner of the building is willing to contribute $85,000 towards the renovation costs, only a very small amount of about $4,500 would need to be paid for by the county to retrofit this area for passport service purposes. Also in this agreement, a couple of other attractive pieces are that that space would be made available to the county at no charge, the expanded space for 12 months, the initial 12 months. Additionally, the owner of the property is willing to back down the lease rate, the current lease rate of $19.75 per square foot down to $19.00 a square foot, so we're going back to the 2013 rate, and then hold that rate steady going forward three years. So, there are a lot of lucrative pieces to doing this, but most importantly, to increase the quality, efficiency, and continuity of service that we provide to our customers in Anoka County.
Is there a motion to approve the amendment to the lease?
So, move.
Moved by Commissioner West, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Discussion?
Would you come, Mr. Chairman, that all who have joined this conversation have been rather excited about it, should be good for us, think that we'd be cost beneficial, we can better serve our customers, we can serve them more expeditiously, we have a standalone space that's right next door to our existing facility, and we expect that we will be able to expand revenue opportunities, and the License Bureau practice has done, the passport piece has done very well for us, so we expect it's only going to continue with the long TSA line, whatever else is going on in the world of air travel, we certainly are travel, look forward to its operation, so I'm pleased to see it moved forward.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Okay, and that motion passes. We're going to go right into the additional agenda item, which is in line with this. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My items are going to be additional staffing for what we just passed, and this is two new positions, .5 FTE, Passport Acceptance Specialist, Grade 9, and they will be, these people are going to be working 29 hours a week during the heavy season, and then in the lighter season, their hours will be a bit less than that. So, I would like to move it.
Okay, moved by Commissioner West, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cordia, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, what I like about what we're doing here with the passports is, what happens in the license center is services that all of our residents need, and actually, residents from other counties use our facilities, and there's a big demand for passports these days, with that enhanced ID not coming through yet is one reason, and of course, the interest in travel and the need that even when we go to Canada and Mexico, we need passports. So, I think this is a good thing, and even better thing is that it basically supports itself.
Okay, those of you who have applied for a passport recently understand the complexities of it, and so being able to iron that process out, I think, is a great service to our residents. With that, any further discussion?
Done. The remaining items are for information purposes only.
Okay, roll call, vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Okay, and that concludes the report. Moving on then to Recycling and Resource Solutions Committee Report, Commissioner Cordia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the committee met recently, there's really only one action item that's required. It's not very exciting reading, it's multiples of solid waste facilities scattered throughout all of Anoka County in the annual lease process, rate process that we established with them, it's pretty much a seamless process. We had really no new actors, some minor transparent changes that, going out with individual contract, but really, same, same, I'd like to offer it, move it.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seeing by Commissioner Schulte. Discussion? You'll notice some of the big names that are on there.
Mm-hmm.
These are definite waste collectors and haulers in our community that somehow magically make the garbage disappear. We appreciate the work that they do. If no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion passes.
And the remaining items are for information purposes only, really. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cordia. The next item is a resolution relating to the appointment of the county assessor, and I'll just read this, it says, "Whereas the Anoka County Board of Commissioners has the authority to organize various departments and divisions to promote efficiency in operations and enhance service to the public pursuant to laws of Minnesota, and whereas the county board in accordance with Minnesota Statutes, Section 273.061 subdivision 1, intends to appoint the county assessor conditioned upon confirmation by the State Commissioner of Revenue, and whereas the terms of the county assessor in accordance with the Minnesota Statutes, Section 273.061 subdivision 2, shall be four years with the current term ending on December 31, 2016, and whereas the current Anoka County assessor is vacating his position as of June 30, 2016, with six months remaining in his term, and whereas Alex Guggenberger has served as the Assessment Compliance Coordinator with Anoka County since November 19, 2012. He holds his senior accreditation from the Minnesota State Board of Assessors and has experience working in a variety of positions in the assessment field. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Alex Guggenberger is hereby appointed to serve as the Anoka County Assessor effective July 1, 2016, for the remainder of the four-year term ending in December 31, 2016. Be it further resolved that the above position shall serve subject to an employment agreement that is on file with employment relations and subject to content and form by the Anoka County Attorney's Office." Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'd like to offer the resolution.
Offered by Commissioner West, is there a discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just comment that Alex, you have caught the eye of the managers of Anoka County. You've been very responsive and intelligent and performed well, and the experience that we've had with you, we're very pleased with you, obviously, this is a reflection of that choice. You're an internal candidate, and we're glad to see you move along in your career here, so I thank you for stepping forward, and we're glad to consider appointing you, in my view.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cordia, Commissioner West.
I'd just like to congratulate you, and I'm very pleased also to see that you are here with us.
Okay, are there comments? Roll call, vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordia.
Aye.
Would you come?
And that resolution is adopted. Congratulations, Alex.
Hello.
Okay, and I believe we have completed the agenda here, if there's nothing else to